All right, everybody, welcome. It is seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Why do they get quiet so fast? I'm not used to that. Next week, we have no presentations, so we'll just jump right into our public hearings, which the first one is an ordinance to authorize additional capital projects to be financed by the Town's General Obligation Public Improvement Funds, Series 2018B, by amending the provisions of a prior ordinance and prior resolution adopted by the Town Council back in 2018. And this will recall, will require a roll call vote next week, and Jenny is here to give us the scoop.
Good evening. So, we had touched upon this prior. This is just adding language to the bond ordinance, specifically naming transportation and road improvement projects as viable projects for this bond funding, in case we want to tap some of that funding, since some of the projects that we had borrowed for are a little bit delayed. So, this just gives us a little more latitude. It's, again, housekeeping. We've worked with the town council and the town attorney on this. It's just adding a little bit of language to give us a little more flexibility. It doesn't impact the useful life of the bonds, the bondholders, the IRS, nothing. So, happy to take in questions.
All right, questions? Bill?
For the benefit of everyone back home, will this affect the bond percentage as far as what the interest rate would be?
No.
That's all I have.
All right. Any other questions on this first item for Jenny? No? Okay. Next up is an ordinance to consider amending the FY 2020 adopted budget, and Jenny is going to tell us what that's all about as well. This will also be a roll call vote next week.
So, we typically do two budget amendments a year, although we can do them, you know, whenever necessary. We're bringing this one forward because there have been some additional priorities since we adopted the 2020 budget, and there were also some very significant off-cycle grants, which are good things, to, you know, to the tune of a bit, for paving in particular. So, the majority of this budget amendment deals with, at least on the general fund side, deals with the security initiative and the paving grants. On the CIP fund side, again, it's giving us a little more flexibility with transportation-related projects. And also, there are a couple of deductions there that you might see. It's transferring around some dollars that were allocated to certain CIP projects that we don't need those for anymore, and that requires council action to move that money. So, you know, what we're looking at for the repaving program is about $558,000 in additional grant money for paving, which is fantastic, calculations DPW. We're as, we're asking for about $344,000 for the security initiative that will mainly fund the security consultant and two gates for DPW, a gate for HPD and shoring up the fencing around DPW. So, this is physical access controls that are quick-hit that we're asking for. We are, there was about $200,000 worth of savings in the police radio project, and so we're moving some of that to fund some of the ask for the security project. So, but you can see the net amounts on the first page. We're basically going to ask to dip into fund balance of about $198,000 in the general fund when it's all said and done. In the CIP fund, we might need to dip into a signed fund balance of $500,000, but we're really, we're really just moving some grant money around or making bond funds available should the first public hearing pass. And finally, in the information systems fund, it's really a net zero because we're taking that surplus and transferring it back over to the general fund. So, lots of numbers, number soup, but happy to answer any questions on that as well.
Okay. Questions for Jenny? Anybody?
So, there's really a, no change in the money. We're just moving it to different locations to, you know, no.
There's a little bit of a change in the fund balance money, so we're asking for about $200,000 more in the general fund to fund the security initiative and a couple of other items. In the CIP fund, it's really just a lot of movement of allocations.
And we're receiving an additional grant remaining.
Correct.
That, that revenue, that revenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, maybe you could have the bottom line of what the increases were and a line that showed where all the new money's coming from? That would...
Yes, and I can do, in the ad, we show that and on the staff report. So, you could see like that you've got an increase in grant revenues, you've got an increase in a transfer in, and then you've got an increase in the use on the side and fund balance.
Yeah.
So, if you would like me to physically show that, is that what you're saying next week?
And then that would, I think the public can see it at a glance.
Okay.
We got all that money, additional money coming in.
Absolutely.
So, we might be spending $200,000 more, but we're also getting all this other money, so.
Right. Fair point. I will make sure I do that.
Bill?
I just want to thank staff, Jenny, Bill, the work that you were doing as far as the budget's concerned, where we had O and E and some things all over the place and streamlining it much better. I'm just telling you, for newer members of council, this is a better way of looking at things. It's an easier way to see where our finances are coming from. We're getting it at a much quicker rate, so it just makes it easier to allocate resources better, too. So, thank you for avoiding the whack-a-mole as it was in the years past, so we appreciate that.
The effort continues, but thank you.
Thank you. That's the second time that whack-a-mole has come up this week, by the way. That's an interesting, interesting question.
Well, it is, look, we're going. Any other questions or comments for Jenny?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last public hearing is an ordinance to approve a lease of space in Towns building over at 39700 Parkway to the Elden Street Players, and I think this is Lisa Gates.
Yes. As you know, we own space at 397. We rented part of it to our delegate. It's essentially just office space, but it, it's a pretty large space. There was a request from the Elden Street Players, Next Stop Theater, that they think it could use that for rehearsals. The town manager spoke with them about that, and we offered them a space that's reflected in the diagram that you have, that is satisfactory to them to use for their rehearsals. It's a one-year lease. You're offering it for a dollar, as we do for any of their office-type space in the town. To non-projects.
Take any questions?
Just to add some more color to this, they had been using the lunchroom of the town shop on a handshake wink and a nod for as long, until memory run to the contrary. It's been forever. It never made any of us comfortable to have them there because we did have insurance on that. We had, they were in staff space, unaccompanied, in a critical, secure area, unaccompanied, and so we were attempting to move them out of there. We moved them to 1481, but that space is, does not, is not reflective of as large as the states would be. So, we had this suite over at 397, where we'd already put the delegate into a larger room in the back end of the suite that would meet their space requirements, and I, I offered that up to them and said, "But, we are going to formalize it with a lease, and we're going to do whatever we do with everybody else to make sure they're in there. We can memorialize this both in the future." And they agreed, and that's what you have before.
And it's a year-to-year because we don't know what this, what we may need this space for going forward.
Right. Exactly.
And also, there seems to be a restroom issue over there. Is that being addressed? Is there a restroom in the back?
Not.
There's, I mean, they have a men's and women's restroom.
Separate from the one that the delegate's office uses?
It's a, it's a common bathroom floor.
So, that's all kind of a common area?
Yeah, it's down the hallway.
Central hall.
Yeah.
Because when I went over there and I saw where the delegate was, there was a little kitchen area and a restroom.
Right, well...
So, there's another way down the hall.
Where the front, where the doors are, it's like if you're in an office building where you might have a suite here and then down the hall is a restroom. Yeah, it's down, it's central hall.
So, they won't have access to the delegate's office, only the restroom? I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
They'll have access to the restroom in the common area. The delegate's office will be locked because there's a locked door in his office. They will have a door further on down in the suite. And we're also looking to hopefully transition other uses that are in staff space, critical staff space, over to that as well.
And I'll apologize, I didn't get to see anything until a few minutes ago because I couldn't get into Granicus.
That's all right.
Because I couldn't figure out how to change the password.
It's all good.
I usually do look at these ahead of time. So, can you tell me where the delegate's office is from here?
Tammy, Tammy knows that.
So, then it's actually in this particular office right here, and using this little area, this desk here as well, and not shown as in there.
And then the restroom is where?
Yes, ma'am. Right here is the men's restroom.
Oh.
Yeah, this little area.
So, he had told me that this area didn't have access to the restroom. It's the delegate.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, yeah, they can, they have a key to this door.
So, they just come around and come through this door and go down there?
Yeah.
Okay. So, they've got to leave their area to go down there?
They should just go out this main hallway door right here. I can talk with him.
Okay. Because he also has a desk here.
Yeah, so it's right in here in that doorway.
Well, and then we're looking to put another, potential other elected officials in there as well.
Okay.
Because trying to get staff space to be secure staff space.
Yeah.
So, we can terminate the lease with 30-day notice, is that correct? Or is it really...
I thought I saw that in the...
Regarding who?
The Elden Street Players.
Oh, yes. Okay, yes.
It's just general.
And that's for the purpose of if we end up putting somebody else in there? Could be for any reason.
It's things that I can't, unknown unknowns.
Okay.
We don't, I, I have nothing in my mind that would cause us to trigger that, but I don't know what's out there in the universe that might come at us.
You rent this space, it's 30 days, isn't it?
Pardon me?
If you're, isn't it typically 30 days anyway?
Yeah.
Well, it's usually... The landlord's got to give them 90 days' notice.
It's, it's different, different, you know. If your lease is going 30 days to 30 days, then it probably is typically 30 days, and there is no regarding law. This particular one, because it is a shorter lease, gives, actually, I was going back to look and make sure, gives the tenant the right to terminate within 30 days, but we have to give them 90 days.
Yes, and I spoke with Supervisor Foss last week because with the risk manager coming on board, there's office space that's used by his office in Old Town Hall that will be needed for that space. And so, he's aware that his liaison will be moving over to a space in this building as well, and as time goes on, the senior office may be as well.
I will say, I'm not sure that she's aware of that yet.
Oh, you don't know she's been told that yet? Supervisor Foss knows, and he is to tell her, so.
Hope you're listening, don't be surprised.
But we had that conversation early last week, so, anyway. We're thinking that it would be a nice asset down the road if we house our local elected officials here together. They might have some synergy there that would work well, so. Any other questions or comments on the lease? Okay. The next item is the state of the town report that we accepted last week, or received last week, but we'll get our report officially next week for the public. Is there anything you wanted to say tonight?
I don't know.
Go ahead. What do you guys think about, I was considering moving the general item first in our agenda next week so that we have an audience, that people actually tune in and hear what is to be said, if there's no issue with that. I'm going to make that change.
I think that would be excellent.
Now, I've really got to go write something.
I know, now you better be here, sir.
Go to the end of the meeting, nobody pay attention. Get someone in there.
I've got 45 seconds.
Well, guess what? We're all still fretting.
It's about damn time. Because he didn't get to use his time because the other meeting went long. He's going first. There we go.
I'm a terrible lead-off hitter, much better than three or five hole, that's...
Well, we got your back.
All right.
All right, well, we are at roundtable at 7:15. People would like to start us off. Anybody?
Sydney? I enjoyed the VML meeting that most, many of us went to, and specifically got some very good information on scooters, which we've all been debating here tonight, and a lot of interesting and sort of sobering information about the opioid crisis. So, as always, it's a really good event, and we always learn, and we get a chance to talk to our colleagues in other towns, learn what they're doing, too. So, I really appreciated the opportunity to do that. Thanks. Who's next? No? Bill?
Just the opening of Sprouts at 6:45 in the morning. There was a lot of people there. It was about 200, so Ms. Baker, Ms. DeCall were there, and I know some people were there the day before as well, when they had the little soft opening, but they seemed to be finding their niche very well, so that was, that was a lot of fun. And to dovetail with what Madam Figuris was saying, I got to speak actually with the Attorney General last week about the opioid crisis. You know, again, some unfortunate personal experience because I went to school in West Virginia and seen some of the stuff that's happening there as well. It is sobering, and it's, it could be your neighbor, so just be aware of those things as well. So, thank you for bringing that up. That's all.
Thank you. Anything else up next?
I'll do. For those that didn't attend, you missed a amazing event put on by Parks and Rec, the Bark Bash. I will tell you, I have never had so much fun. People felt very comfortable, welcomed and loved, and expressed a lot of ideas, by the way. So, I think I'll just wrap it under the umbrella of communication from the town to the residents. Stuff like that, I think if there's something we can do to promote, I know we're doing everything, but if there's things we can do differently, the reception is, and this wasn't one or two people, it was a few people. We could probably do a little bit differently in terms of communicating events.
Of getting word out.
Yeah. We have great schools. They're not invested by gang members, right? I mean, just stuff about Herndon, not that we own this stuff, but just a little bit more promoting the town, so give that some fun. I said I mentioned it, I mentioned it.
Jenny?
Sure. So, yeah, I'll add to what Sydney was talking about with VML. I thought it was another, this was my sixth time going to VML, and, yeah, always a good use of time, particularly the part, like any conference, where you get to meet with your colleagues. One of the things I think, and I know Lisa and I, Merkel and I have spoken about this in the past, there's so many Lisa's, so I know who I think, that I think it really highlights for us, even though, you know, we're the, we're the third biggest town, and there is a lot of differences between us and other towns. And in many ways, like, we just, we have a really, we run a really tight ship here. We have a really professional staff. I mean, some of the challenges that our other towns face is, it's like, feels dramatically different than what we have in Herndon. So, I just, it just reminds me how fortunate we are and how proud I am to be part of this organization and to live in this town, so I always liked that part. Certainly loved the part about the fact that Lime came, and we got to ride scooters and just check that out, that, that of course is, you know, it was interesting to think about Lime, you know, which is just one of the companies. There's other operators we could look at. Lime, of course, is in use in DC and, and other parts. But as you look at, they've been around for two years, right? They've been a company for two years, and they're already on five continents and all over the US, right? So, there's the level of expansion. I mean, I know all of us are seeing it, and potentially have all used it in some other place, or Fairfax County's now starting, it's going to, you know, get that ramped up. But this is certainly coming, and so it was really timely that VML gave us some education on what to prepare for as we write our ordinance, which I know is on the docket in a few weeks, and certainly will want some public input on that, but, and, you know, of course, there's legal parameters of what we can and can't require of them, but it is coming, and I'm sure the chief is going to want to weigh in and, and other folks, because this is something that, and DPW, of course, is going to, there's a bunch of our departments where this is going to dramatically, you know, we're really going to have to think about how we implement that, but like I said, they did give us some good things to think about. There, there is some template and language that other folks are, are looking at. So, thank you for already being ahead of the curve, Town Manager, Bill Ashton, on what we're going to do there. So, that's great.
That's great.
Man, Lisa, thank you. We already have somebody working with Lisa.
Oh, good.
And embedded in purple wall.
Good.
And embedded?
We're embedded.
We're going to paddle together.
Right? We're talking about it. Yeah, and then there was, the other thing at VML, which you guys have also mentioned, the opioid crisis, that was a big part of, over the three-day conference, or even four-day, if I include what, what Sheila and Lisa went to with the mayor and vice mayor conference. I mean, it was just a, a big theme of, and the guest speaker they had, which was the mayor of Huntington, West Virginia?
Yeah.
Huntington, was excellent. He was just really endearing, and what I loved about his talk, so he's to some extent, his, unfortunately, his town of 50,000 people, again, in Huntington, West Virginia, is considered kind of the epicenter of the opioid crisis. And, you know, again, of course, it affects us here. I know it's personally impacted some of the folks in this room, but certainly in the, you know, the, like, that whole Blue Ridge, that part is, they have a major, major hit to, to those communities. And Huntington, West Virginia, I think he talked about a day when 28 people died in one day of overdoses, right? So, it was horrendous, right, what he talked about, and, but what I really took away from some of the things he talked about, which I think is just a lesson in general in, in leadership and in dealing with this crisis or any crisis, he talked about the fact that he really had to adapt and change his approach, because his original approach was arrest, right? Let's, we're going to arrest our way out of this. We are not letting drug dealers in our town. We're going to figure this out. We're going to, and he's like, I was so proud of myself because we had like 200 arrests in the first couple of weeks, and then, of course, more came in.
Yep.
And it just, and I thought, just the, his humility about it, about realizing that's not the right solution, and, and really focused on compassion and on criminal justice reform and all the, the places where we just need to be, how we can impact that. And of course, Mark Herring also spoke, and he's talked a lot about criminal justice reform.
Stupidism.
Right?
Well, and about not, not accepting the settlements that Purdue Farm is giving because it's not enough.
Right. It's not enough, and they have, that family is hiding billions of dollars, but that's maybe another...
And rehabilitation in the prison system.
Prison system, exactly. So, and even, you know, just on a minor thing, that the, VML, the legislative committee, where they, they are recommending a change in terms of marijuana, if you're, if you have .5, a half ounce or less, that we remove the fact that, well, our goal is, sorry, what I should say is, what we're recommending to the state is, let's remove any criminal or civil penalty for a half ounce or less, right? Let's stop legislating addiction and morality, right, some of those things. So, it was, that was a really interesting part because, again, if you look at the state of Virginia, there's, it's blue and red, right? There are, it's a very purple state. There are folks that have widely different views, and certainly from, from the folks that sit in that room, but I was just, I was very, it was one of, it was one of the better ones in terms of the level of discussion and the types of topics we talked about that, that impact Herndon and, and other communities, so, yeah, it was a great few days. Thanks.
That's it. Sheila?
Well, I've been going to these opioid meetings for, I think, two years now, so there was also a lot of people from Wise and Lee County that weren't too thrilled that that speaker from West Virginia was saying it all started there, because we have a, have had a tremendous problem in that area because of the, they go for the poverty. That's where they, they've taken it. But my favorite take was the stormwater, which I've already told Bill about. There's actually money we can get from some federal agencies that can help on some, on some of our stormwater issues, and it was lots of money. I mean, there was one, Ashland put in, redid their, I'm not saying we're going to redo the police station, but the police station in Ash, Ashland needed to be redone. It was next to a stream that needed restoration, so they were able to get federal money, but non-perbious in part of it, and the town contributed 15 out of 430,000 dollars. So, they needed 15,000, and they got all the rest, so I thought that was awesome. So, if we can figure out some projects to pull that together.
That's a good rate.
Open the floodgates, if you will.
Sir?
Open the floodgates, if you will.
But, you know, that, that was an environmentally positive thing to do, and physically very awesome thing to do, so I thought that was great. Bill and I both went to the housing challenges, and we both got up and walked out going, wow, these people are way above our grades, because we're talking...
Massive neighborhood.
Massive, massive, massive.
Just redeveloped.
Then I found out that there was a smaller one that went in, so I'm going to pull that up. But the first two were so huge, I was just like, man, what are we doing here? But...
It's not going to help our situation.
Yeah, it was not going to help our situation at all. And the Virginia Green Initiative was very good. They just talked about the little, little things that you can do, like looking around the number of computers we have in the town that get left on all night long, and just turning those off, and they had the amount of money. And the individual that spoke is in lab, and so he's easily accessible. He gets excited about talking about it, so you could bring them over, and he could have lunch with your staff, and they could talk forever. But, you know, just doing a lot of the IT type things, just little stuff, but we're already doing a lot of it, but it was just good to get their take on it. The other thing was, and our governor was there, he gave a great talk, too, so we had the lieutenant governor, I mean, the governor and the attorney general, but the other thing, when I was in the mayor's conference, everyone was talking about communication and how to get better communication, so I did mention that we had learned about roundtables and that we were now doing them, and they've been nothing but positive because the people, in fact, one guy that was talking was pretty shy, and he said he didn't like to talk in front of people, so that's a reason these roundtables work, because who the heck, if you're afraid to get up and talk in front of the group, you're not going to come to a town council meeting and get up and say something. So, I usually just tell people, if you won't let them come over, you can protect your neighborhood or whatever, but it's hard to get that message out. Not everybody watches Facebook or tunes into the meetings, but I thought it was well worth it, but I didn't like dropping home in the rain.
181.
Fix that for next time.
I'll work on 181.
Right, you got better eventually.
So, yeah, I thought the conference was, was really great this year. Sheila and I and Bill joined us on Sunday. There was, there were two sections about emergency management and crisis management, that sort of thing, and the second one was really, really great. I can't remember the guy's name.
Ron Carley.
Ron Carley.
He's the county administrator of Arlington.
And he just talked about how there were really no big crises, but when he was the administrator in Arlington in the 80s and 90s, and then it was like the floodgates, with Y, well, Y2K being the first thing, and he made the connection that I never really thought about, because I know there's a lot of IT people at the table, and we were all probably sitting, you know, in an office waiting for the world to end that night, but he made the, the connection that that preparedness really helped them get prepared for 9/11 in a way that would not have happened otherwise, and so I never really thought about that. But a lot of good information, and this is where, I can't remember, maybe all of you said, the smaller jurisdictions are just really fighting an uphill battle with this. I mean, there, there are jurisdictions where the mayor and council are all hands-on-deck when an emergency happens because there is no staff.
Yeah.
So, we are super fortunate here, and it's really humbling, and also, it, I think it's good for us to have that perspective, too, that there are, they have all the same FOIA requirements and all of the same mandates that we have from the Commonwealth, and they're, I don't know how they're doing it, actually, so. Surprising to me, I was elected to be the town section chair for VML, and I'm not really sure what I've gotten myself into, but I will try to represent us well, and we'll keep you posted on that.
Represent all the town. How many towns are there? There's 100 cities.
190, there's a lot.
And then, yeah, 100 and 90.
Yeah, so I have to go to Norfolk in December for a meeting, and they're really trying to, I don't want to talk too long about it, but VML is really kind of in a transition right now, and they're really trying to modernize a little bit, make sure we're really meeting the needs and making the time that we're there really worth it. the needs and making the time that we're there really worth it. And so I'm excited because I do feel that towns sometimes get sort of, it's always the counties and cities and towns, and I also would like to help some of the smaller towns get more of a voice, and maybe they can have some, some synergy like we have with the Town Association of Northern Virginia, that's been really valuable, maybe we can help provide some resources for that sort of thing. Sprouts, I wasn't there, because it was my birthday, and I was eating birthday cake with my daughter at 6:45, but I'm super excited that they gave $5,000 to Food for Neighbors that morning, which is off to a great start, and I don't want to belabor this, but I am still hearing a lot about the glass recycling situation, which I know is not totally our fault, but people are really concerned about it, so I just wanted to throw that out, and I know you guys are working on what we're trying to do.
We're so proud of the county.
But I know they are looking for additional Purple Bin locations, and I know that we're saying, hey, we'd like to be one of those, so.
Exactly.
And we have a spot already.
It's not, it's not the spot, Lethal and Barbara, it's not the spot, it's the logistics of the county saying, well, people from Chantilly have got to drive to Reston, or why can't they drive to Reston from Herndon? And we're saying, well, we're just dropping here, get one, but the logistics of them coming to pick it up and servicing the container and that sort of thing all have to be our debt.
If there's anything that the council and I can do to, to be loud about that, we're happy.
I think we're okay now.
But we'll stay out of the way for now.
I think we'll end up there.
Well, I just know that...
The good news about that, Gary Gifford, who's a person in the town that really helped us start get recycling going, he used to tell me, when we did recycling with glass, that he would throw glass in his trash periodically, because when they incinerate, the glass helps bring the temperature up so that it burns more efficiently. So, right now, we can know that we are efficiently burning all of our trash.
We're smoking the fires up hell.
Or just a moment.
So, anyway, I know we're working on that, it's something people care about, so I just wanted to...
Before we get off the topic, is that, it's effective immediately, right?
Yes.
Essentially.
They gave us no notice.
No, they were, it was always floating around out there that something could break, and then all of a sudden...
It was like...
I'll tell you how quickly it was, early, earlier in the week, we had someone write to me specifically, and I said, what's the answer to this, and I got the answer, and then two days later, Fairfax County said, nope, sorry. So I had to write her back and go, well, this is a fluid situation. So, it was, it really was just...
A fluid container situation, actually.
And Tammy, is that, so is there extra work for your folks right now in terms of if you're collecting? Because people, I mean, sure, they have, sometimes I put my recycling out once a month, so is there still glass, is that a pain?
Um, it kind of is what it is right now, and we're, I mean, they're still accepting it, but it's not going where we want it to go.
It's just thrown away.
Yeah, so, you know, if you can put it in your refuse bin or trash bin...
It's better, okay, got it.
It'll heat up the fire. I'm trying to reuse the bottles, I'm helping the folks, but I know I'm not going to be able to maintain this for long.
All right, Mr. Chairman, who do we have for it?
Again, VML was, in my opinion, markedly better than last year in terms of informativeness, and the sessions were outstanding. And the reason why I wasn't at the stormwater management session, and as heartbreaking as the opioids were, even more so was the session I did attend at that same time, which was on police mental health.
Oh, yeah.
And there are 265 law enforcement officers take their lives each year, the last several, we're on pace for hitting 300 this year. It is a crisis, it's happening out there. Fairfax County is, for, of, working on creating a culture that de-stigmatizes the need to seek mental health and counseling, and to, to realize that if you do that, you're not going to lose your badge and gun over it. They had a very compelling video of an Arlington County law enforcement officer who went to take his life and didn't, and then ended up getting the help he needed, and was back out on the streets. It was the, for him, it was the memories of 9/11, it was just, were just rallying around in his brain, or the impetus, plus all the other things that they do, day in and day out. So it's truly a topic that is worth keeping our eye on, and it was a moving, moving piece, it truly was. But that being said, putting that aside, on a lighter note, of all of the sessions I attended, and all the great ideas, and all the networking, and the things going back and forth, the best idea I got the entire weekend...
What?
Was on sponsor night, when I went over and started hanging out with the Roanoke DPW guys.
Okay.
And I'm sitting around talking to the DPW guys in their orange suits, and they're convicts, I'm not sure which one, I'm surprised, but, no, they gave me a great idea on refuse routes that I passed along to Tammy, it was a wonderful idea, and I was like, see, I could just come down and hang with you guys before I met anybody else. But, no, it was such a very good time.
That's good to hear.
All right, well, that concludes our public agenda, but we do have a need to go into a closed meeting, so I'll ask for a motion to do so under section 2.237 11A1, Code of Virginia for Discussion of Perspective Candidates Relative to Appointments to Boards and Commissions. So, second, third, fourth, and sheila, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, let's take a super quick break, because we've not started in like an hour.
Right, I'm there. In regards to small towns and things like that, I can probably,